All the meeting to order at seven oh one. Agenda review. Does anyone have anything to add, move, change, delete? See.
Not to change or delete, I just, I just want to suggest that I had informed the principals that they could simply submit their written reports as well as Robin. To help streamline the meeting.
In order to get done by eight o'clock, we made a command decision for written reports tonight from Jamie and the two principals. So moving on to public comments, I don't see anyone in person. And I don't see anyone on Zoom, so we will have another opportunity for public comment at the end. Moving on to reports. Josh, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to give your report?
Okay. So the new semester began on Monday, and just in these past few days, we've been seeing teachers, including AI standards, in their course expectations following the recent approval of the AI course expectations motion. And that's just very exciting, I think, for council, kind of seeing, or seeing that bear fruit. Recently also, the curriculum committee brought a course concern revision motion to council, and so that amended outdated language which had students submit course concerns through a form which nobody has had access to in like six years. And now it redirects students to speak directly with a teacher if they have concerns, or to go to their counselor for help determining next steps. And then also council recently talked about a mental health day motion. And so that proposal was to call upon the administration to develop a mental health day plan. And those would have been days once a quarter in which there would have been no scheduled classes. And so students basically would have used them as, they would have used X periods several years ago, or there would have been organized school activities. Council was concerned that there would be low school attendance and lost instructional time. So we amended the motion to urge the administration to work with the student life committee to develop a course of action to aid mental health. And that is all we have done basically this past month.
Thank you, Josh. Any comments or questions for Josh? Thank you. Moving on, Tim's report is posted. If anyone had any questions or comments for Tim? Uh, Kim?
Yeah. It was just for the date, and maybe you can send it around for the RMS, sorry, where was it? The RMS math parents night? It said it was scheduled, but I just didn't know what date it was.
Did you hear that, Tim?
Yes, I did. We're in the process, I'm meeting with Jason tomorrow, Jason and Robin, so that we can nail down a date, and then we'll get that out. We just want to make sure that, like, we didn't have last time. We want to make sure that we have everybody there, so we can answer all the questions that people have that have been forwarded, and also create sort of a, show that it's, it's not just me. I don't, you know, I have been the face so far, but this is a much more far-reaching idea than that. So we just want to nail that down. It'll be before February break.
But some, not in January, sometime in February?
Uh, yeah, probably. I, you know, it's not this week. It could be next week or the week after, which are, look like they're fairly open in terms of evenings for us. We don't have that much out there. No holidays, no concerts, no dances. So we're hoping that we have a number of, of open dates that we can look at.
Thank you, Tim. Any other comments or questions for Tim? Moving on to Julie. Julie submitted a report. Anyone have any comments or questions to Julie about what's going on at the high school? Oh, yeah.
Just a little curious about possible changes to graduation requirements, knowing that I think imparted is set by state statutes, no?
Neil, your foot's about to pull your cord, just be careful.
Yeah, so there's the state requirement. Our handbook and the school board policy don't all match. But then we had a conversation this week in our CPP group, and different, we've looked at different graduation requirements across the state, and there's the state standard, and some schools have more than the minimum state standard. We right now have this minimum state standard of 20 credits, and the thought was to bring them all in alignment at 20, and then come up with other pathways to a diploma. However, the group decided they want to look at the whole thing, other pathways and a standard diploma, and try to figure out what to do. So it's farther away from you than I thought. But at some point, obviously, if we want to change it, we have to bring it to you, and it at least has to meet the state minimum.
Any other comments or questions for Julie? And what is the impetus behind changing the terms from freshman, sophomore, junior, gender neutral, or?
A staff member brought it that, but also, also just meanings of the words. If you look up the meaning of the words, and, you know, like sophomoric and things like that, there's not necessarily great meanings to all the words. And so maybe we want to move away from them.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Julie. Moving on to business requiring discussion, policy. This is our second reading, I believe, of this one. And Beth is not here. They, I remember the issue was the requirements for Vermont. Jay, do you know if that was modified?
Right. So this, this is specific to Dresden.
Yep.
And one of the big changes is a requirement for training for people. And so where we delayed on this was that we, we had volunteers, for example, that are named, and it's a, we got hung up again on this term of designated volunteer versus the parent that comes in once for a celebration or something in an elementary classroom.
Mm-hmm.
We ended up deciding we're going, going to go ahead and require this training to be completed when we do the fingerprinting and so forth. We'll provide them with a link and a computer, and they'll be able to knock out the 25 or so minute training at that time.
Okay. But I thought the, the question was, because the rule is requiring us to go to D C Y F, but in Vermont it's Kinns, I believe?
D C F.
D C F. So if it's a Vermont child, it's going to go to the Hanover police, and they will handle the coordination across to Vermont?
That, that's complicated. It's often dictated by the student's residence. So we've had situations here, and Julie, feel free to chime in, where we'll contact Vermont D C F in a situation where it's a Vermont student, and if it's a new Hanover student, we'll typically go to D C Y F.
But the rule says all students, it doesn't, it doesn't delineate between a Vermont student or a, so even if it's a Vermont student, we're still required to report to D C Y F?
You got me. I, I, um.
Wasn't that the discussion? Did we talk about this in committee, perhaps, that because the schools were in New Hampshire, that the proper chain of command was to start with? And I think that we heard from at least one staff member who said the process is, yeah, they'll call and they'll be almost immediately directed to them, call the fellow agency in the appropriate state.
Yeah.
But that, that's just sort of the process, because New Hampshire is the, everyone is a mandatory reporter state.
Mm-hmm.
So got to report it, and then gets chartered appropriately. That's what I seem to recall from committee?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we don't, someone gets in trouble for saying, oh, it's a Vermont student, I'm calling D C F, and not following the RSA that says you have to call D C Y F.
So Jay, just to chime in, is that okay?
Please do.
No, we, I mean, right now, what we would do is call the state the student is from. We can most certainly call the, we could most certainly call the, call New Hampshire, but they'll just tell us to call Vermont. So if that's, you know, what is preferable to do, we can do that. It's just that often we'll just pick up, we look at the address and we call the proper state.
Oh, I, yeah, I think that makes sense. The problem is the RSA specifically says you need to report it to New Hampshire. It doesn't say, if you're a Vermont student, it doesn't apply to you. So I just, I don't want someone to get in trouble for doing our old way and then finding out that we violated RSA.
I'm perfectly happy contacting the commissioner and just explaining this is one of those interstate agreement sort of situations where.
Go ahead, Tim.
I would suggest that we, our policy reflect what's reported by law, and we inform the staff of what their legal requirements are, whatever they are. So if it's that, if you're, if this is reported to you in New Hampshire, regardless of where the person's from, whether you know or you don't know, you're supposed to call D C Y F, then I think that's what our policy should say, and that's what people should be trained to do. And then D C Y F can refer it to the appropriate agency, or they can tell, whatever comes next comes, maybe you do it to both, but if the law requires it, that's what our policy should say. People should know that that's the law.
Ben's got his hand up. Go ahead, Ben.
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you.
No, and also note that the language says, report to D C Y F or directly to the police, and either one of those agreed would forward on to the appropriate party, which we talked about in policy, like Tara mentioned. And just as a thing going forward, as a side to this thing, the policy committee is working on refining the policy on how to make policies of which sort of the RSA type appropriate language is going to be a feature as part of that. But ongoing, we, we're going to try to make the assumption and put in language before it comes to the SAU to have appropriate statutory language for both states before it gets to this point going forward.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
Anyone have any question about, Neil, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I don't disagree with Tony, but then I think the next step, though, is that policy probably ought to match past practice unless past practice was not legal. And it sounds like we weren't relying on D C Y F of New Hampshire to make that call to Vermont. Basically, what was happening was we were making the call to Vermont. And, you know, that might be the right thing to do, but I think that our policy ought to also be reflective of either what we were doing or what we're going to do, right? So that when people go to look at the policy, they understand what's, what's likely to happen.
So you're suggesting adding in the language that if it's a Vermont student?
Well, I guess, honestly, what I would suggest is checking legal counsel, because this is one of those areas that's not entirely clear, I think. Right? Because, I mean, in 99% of the things that we do, right, we understand that Dresden operates under New Hampshire law. But this one strikes me as, it's broader, it's broader than just a school issue. Now we're starting to involve other state agencies and things, and maybe legal counsel ought to review how an interstate school district is supposed to handle these sorts of things.
So it sounds like maybe we send this back. Go ahead.
I, I just think we should follow the law. And if the law says that we, as mandatory reporters in New Hampshire, and the, and the abuse has been identified in New Hampshire because the Dresden schools happen to be located there, I think we follow the law. And making the report to police or to the appropriate agency in New Hampshire, if they immediately say, this is not our jurisdiction, please call the next appropriate agency, then that's fine, and I think we're covered. But I'm quite certain that there's not going to be a special law developed for our district. I'm, I'm certain that we're going to have to follow the one that's on the books. So I would suggest that we do that.
So, go ahead, Neil.
To be clear, I wasn't suggesting that we ask for a new law. I just wanted to make sure that it sounded like current practice does not match what you just described.
Right.
I think this policy updates that practice by saying that you have to either notify police or D C Y F in New Hampshire. Those are the two options per the statute that we need to operate under. I, we can get all the legal, you know, sort of review that we want. That law's not going to change, and this is policy that's mandated by law in the state. So I think we should put this into place. I would be very uncomfortable pushing this again, because this is required and mandatory. So we can certainly talk about implementation, which is a different thing than policy, but this policy would update any past practice.
I agree. And I think the intention of this law, if, if I'm sort of reading into it, would be to make sure that things aren't falling through the cracks across the state. So whether the child lives in this state or another state, I think that, that's still, that would be why our lawmakers in New Hampshire wanted this as a policy for school boards, right? So that makes sense to me.
So how do we want to proceed on this? Do we want to vote on it tonight, or?
I just, has legal, like, last time when we were here, I think we talked about reviewing it, so I make sure that's.
Ben?
Jake can chime in on the legal aspect. I don't remember, because this, we talked about this in November at policy. But this is a second reading tonight, and I was just generally agreeing with Kelly and Tara's points. And it was also approved at Dresden at our last meeting, just for further background.
Well, this is Dresden. It was, uh, at Hanover?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, Hanover.
Okay. Julie's got her hand up. Go ahead, Julie.
I think in practice, it's not an issue for us either way. I mean, do what you need to do. It's pretty easy to put into practice. We just call, same thing that we do now. We call the police, or we call D C F, D C Y F, and they tell us to call the other peo, we can do it. It's just, it's one extra phone call, it's not a big deal. So do what you need to do legally, obviously.
Okay. So can we vote on it? Okay. Moving on to the school calendar discussion, this, we brought, we had this discussion last week at Hanover. There is a new committee standing up. Lisa Christie's going to be heading it to take a look at the requests from the community regarding religious holidays. That committee has not yet met and will not impact this calendar we're voting on right now. So the, the decision at Hanover was just to take a look at, and if we're fine with this calendar as presented, to vote on it. Anyone have any questions about that? Then the resolution, oh, yes.
I said at the Hanover meeting, but just if we could have an easier tally at the bottom, just so we can get the number of days of school, you know, making sure that it's the minimum number of days, and commenting that, like, this is the minimum number of days. It's just easier for school workers to.
And I, I did mention at the Hanover that the, I think this document's ready to be moved into the 21st century on an Excel spreadsheet with color coding. It makes, this is really hard to read with underlines and parentheses and special Ps and, yes.
And this remains a graph. This is still a, a discussion item, not an action item, so.
Okay.
All those comments are duly noted, and we'll make sure that we bring it into this current line.
Great. Moving on to resolution.
Rick, sorry. There's a member of the public who contacted me today with a calendar question. I think she's actually on right now.
Yeah, yep, got two hands up. Let me go with Beth DeSimone first. Go ahead, Beth. Introduce, introduce yourself and what time you're calling from. Beth, we can't hear you. I don't know if your microphone's off. While you try to fix your microphone, can you move P P Ma over?
Hi, I just have a question. I joined five minutes late. Is the, is the, is the opportunity for public comment closed?
It, we passed that. We have another opportunity for public comment at the end of the today's meeting, which will be.
Okay, great.
It will be pretty soon.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Beth, were you able to get your microphone working?
I can paraphrase if you'd like.
Was it Beth that?
Calendar.
Okay.
Yeah. It, it's a quick one, actually, too, so it's probably not worth holding this up. Beth was just wondering if we could consider perhaps not having school during presidential, the presidential election day in November, because today was a bit of a zoo, and there's every reason to expect that the actual presidential election will be the same, possibly very much worse. So that was something for us to consider.
And November's election is the first Tuesday, the fifth?
That was it.
So.
Yes.
So we've had this, this issue a number of times, and again, I'll invite Julie to speak up if she'd like. But we, this is a big decision for us. So if we decide we're not going to hold school on election day, that means we're not holding school. It'd be very difficult to say we're not having high school, but we're going to have elementary and middle school. I suppose we could. We do it for finals, that sort of thing, so.
Press eighteen.
There's, there's a lot to consider, but we certainly could. It certainly would make lives easier, and it would allow our 18-year-old students, well, they can, they usually don't have too much trouble voting, but.
So I, I mean, I guess, so what I had said to Beth is to, to mention it tonight, and that, so that you guys could discuss it, and we could bring it up perhaps at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Beth, if there's something else that Kelly missed, or you wanted to add, feel free to email me, and I'll share it with the board. Okay, moving on, oh, Kim, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, for, I forgot the person's name who was asking about the public comment, but I did want to clarify that if your public comment was about something not on the agenda, then what Rick said absolutely, obviously, is true. But if it's something on the agenda, like if you wanted to talk about the school calendar, what we just talked about in it, then you can, you have the opportunity to make a comment in that agenda item. So raise your hand and that kind of thing. Did I overstep the clarification? I just wanted to make sure in case your public comment was related to something already on the agenda.
So Ms. Ma, if, if there's a comment about something on our agenda right now, if you want to raise your hand when we get to that item. If not, we'll have a public comment at the end again. So moving on to resolution, I'll turn this over to Jeff.
So I brought this resolution to the Hanover School Board, and we had a quick and positive conversation about it. But in general, the wording of the resolution makes reference to a number of statistics relative to secure gun storage and the absence thereof. And the Hanover Board directed Jay to tidy up the document. I offered to help, and so then Rick and I and Jay together tidied up the document. The, one of the main motivators, and I printed off some information, if you'll pass it down to Garrett, the, at our Hanover Board meeting, people asked about statistics that backed up all the numbers in the resolution, and they're on the first sheet that I gave you, and there's a lot of citation at the end. But I copied a couple other items, because there is an enormous amount in what's called the toolkit. And one of the reasons I think this is so compelling is that it helps families in the district to talk about guns, both with their children, but with other families. I know that when my kids were going through high school, we would say, are you going to be home when your children are having this party at your house? And you won't be serving alcohol, right? And this allows parents a way of talking about, well, you want my child to come babysit? I just need to have a quick conversation with you about guns. And I don't think any of us have a problem with having those conversations, but perhaps not everybody has thought about it or has seen models. And I think nothing, it, it works better than a whole community making an effort in the same direction. But they also have information about suicide rates among LGBTQ plus students that are really compelling as part of the conversation. I've talked to all the building principals in the district, except for across school, and they all really welcome the idea of doing this. And so information would be sent out to parents, but the Hanover Board was reluctant to include a letter that required, that asked parents to sign it and return it. It's easy enough to take the parent's signatures off, but to maybe keep the letter because there is a live link that gives parents access to a lot of these documents. But we could also, we, the principals could also share some of this information in their newsletters. There could be posters up in the school. One board member down at Oyster River told me that she and another woman regularly go to community meetings, and they provide information on resources for safe securing your guns. And it, whether they're gun locks, and they're different kinds, and they work with the police department, and they do a lot around hunting season. So it just seemed like a really easy thing for us to do as a board. And I also promised my daughter that I would bring this to all of you. So there it is.
Truly appreciate all the hard work you've put into this, Deb. I, I fully support the resolution. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Tony?
I also support the resolution, but I had just a language question. In the next-to-last paragraph, it says. It says, this includes sending home the fact sheet. I don't know what the fact sheet is.
The fact sheet is one that I was not able to print because I don't have a printer at home and so I was using the How library. There is a fact sheet in the toolkit.
But maybe we should just say a fact sheet about safety.
Oh, sure. Sure.
What's the asterisk next to it?
Without the asterisk.
And a period. Correct.
Yeah.
Semicolon.
I don't think my eyes were on this the last time, so that could just be, I may have put that and then had a comment down at the bottom about whether we want to have information on the. I don't remember.
Answering that question, perhaps.
Yeah, yeah. But absolutely. I mean, I'm not wedded to punctuation in here. So if you think there's something that needs to be cleaned up, we can easily do that.
I just think like we can develop a fact sheet. It could be from could be the school's own. It could be on a website, but we're not going to tie our hands. We just say a fact sheet. That's fair enough.
You're absolutely right.
Or be more generic, sending home information on safe gun storage.
Yeah.
Which then.
Easy peasy.
Is that still on Google?
I mean, we can just delete the sentence.
Yeah, we can delete the sentence.
That's what it says that.
Yeah.
Okay. So then.
Right.
So the plan on this resolution is right now is still discussion. So do you think February?
I would love to see it voted on in February. I really wanted to do it before the current board loses people and we have a turnover because I think that just kicks it on down the road.
Well, it's planned on having it up for a vote in February.
Okay.
Because editorial changes.
Great, thank you. My daughter will be happy.
Moving on to business requiring action.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
It just made me think sort of tangential.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Jamie had her hand up.
It's a little tangential, but it made me think of, you know, kind of more recent instances. I guess I'm wondering if our policies are adequate enough to cover, I mean, we obviously have weapons policy, that's the J I C I. But then items that may look like weapons or something to that effect on do we need our own storage or separate security type measures for things like that that are our school property? So I don't need to get into details of what actually happened, but I just.
I can give an example, like if we had a fencing team, for example, like how we would store that equipment would be maybe an example.
Or javelin.
Or javelin. It's, yeah, but this is specific to firearms. This is not.
No.
Is it more generic?
Yeah, it just made me think like when we're talking about storage of weapons and encouraging safety.
So what what items I could see like javelins or but are you talking like scissors?
Theater props.
Okay.
You know, things that could be if looked, I mean, just just making sure that we are not causing undue anxiety or stress or anything. It just makes me think, and I don't know if that's a school board policy or if it's just more of like an our administrative kind of thing. It just feel like we should.
Yes, we should. And have.
I figured, but.
I like the resolution. The only thing that I noticed, which what Kim just said made me think of this, when but we traditionally direct the superintendent, the administration to do something through policy, not through resolution. And I'm wondering if that's how we really ought to approach this, because it's actually asking the superintendent and staff to do something up on the board's direction. And part of me thinks that that's better handled through policy.
So maybe this is the first step of passing a resolution and go over to the policy committee to actually craft the policy.
I mean, yes, I also am not even sure that you need the step of the resolution. You could just go straight to policy, but I it doesn't matter to me which way we get there. I just think in order to be consistent sometime in the future, we are going to forget that the Dresden Board passed a resolution that directed the superintendent to do something and then it gets lost.
My one response to that is that I don't disagree with you. I completely hear what you're saying. I think that there is an effort to bring momentum nationally to school boards to pass similar resolutions. So for example, the whole Houston Consolidated School District has passed similar resolutions. Alaska Public Schools, Kansas, Erie, I can't remember all of, almost the entire state of Massachusetts has done it. And so I think there is momentum behind this particular step, but I don't disagree with you. At the same time, I would hate to see this get bogged down into now we have to write a policy, now we have to bring the policy back. I think we could do the resolution and then let the policy trail along behind.
Julie?
Traditionally, I think resolutions for us have been more public facing and less action item related. So I mean, maybe there's some tinkering to pull action out or to say, you know, additionally, this will be followed up with policy. So I think that two-step, I see the value in the two-step process if this is a public facing thing that's going to go on our website, for example, to say we're, you know, this is important to us and we're working towards policy.
Yep. Tony?
So I think it's the, so I think we could change, modify the language slightly to say things like now therefore be resolved, the board resolves to work with the superintendent and staff to, you know, create a policy or something, you know.
Sounds good.
Ben?
Two things. It hurts my feelings when we say getting bogged down in policy, just saying. So secondly, though, is I was reminded during this conversation that a few months ago, we tried to do a policy involving firearms and got our hand slapped pretty heavily by the state, as you guys may remember. So I think we should probably need to avoid policies that directly go at firearms. We had even had to carve firearms out of the weapons policy. So.
No, I would disagree. I don't think there's a RSA or a policy that prevents us from talking about safe storage. The policy was about carrying and clo- open.
I don't disagree, but just that any sort of policy that would tackle firearms as a subject, we would be getting lots of attention.
If we have a draft, we kick it over to our attorney, just to make sure we're, we can work with it. So eventually it's going to end up in the swamp of policy committee.
I believe bogged fire ideas.
The morale. Jake?
I just want to remind us, too, that we do feature on the landing page for the school boards, we have our existing gun resolution highlighted there and links to other resolutions that we've passed as a board. So there is a repository, so that hopefully we don't get too forgetful, as long as we maintain the website the way it is, we should be okay.
Okay, so my understanding is we'll take away the language to make it less of a direction and more of a.
Working together.
Yeah. Aspirational. And then eventually a potential policy that will be reviewed by our attorneys, make sure we're not running afoul of New Hampshire. Okay, so business requiring action. Anyone have any issues or concerns with any of those items? Deb?
Ben, please correct me, wasn't there some confusion in one of the minutes about who is approving the?
Oh, that's right.
That was Hanover, not Dresden.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Never mind.
Anyone from Hanover remember who volunteered?
I think I was volunteered and I did.
I think you were too.
I did not respond to any email queries.
Oh, that's right. You were, you weren't there.
We've only told Kelly, don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, we've only told Kelly.
Okay, so does anyone have any issues with these? If not, can someone make a consent motion?
Look, I have a change on the meeting minutes for December 19th.
Yep.
Under discussion information warrant articles, it says article number three and it references collective bargaining agreement over two years and it should say three years.
It's way down.
Oh. Oh, yep, okay, so we'll modify that to three years. So would someone like to make a consent motion as modified? I want to jump at it. Oh, Deb, go ahead.
I move to approve items B, C with modifications, D, E, and F by consent.
About a second. Michael. Neil?
Hartman, yes.
Barry, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Roser, yes.
McConnell, yes.
Costa, yes.
Ben?
Eni, yes.
Lisa? Lisa's driving. I'm not sure if she can.
Unmute or unmute.
Okay, Lisa's just in listen mode right now, so. Moving on to report reports of the chair, I have nothing to report other than the nomination period is open for school board members. We already had our first. We had someone submit their name today. Thank you, Kelly. So.
I was just so excited to be a pervert. We need to follow.
Next three years.
Moving on, does anyone have any committee reports? Oh, Kim?
I kind of have one. It's because I was another voluntold position on being on the town of Hanover's capital improvement plan project committee, where they're basically just doing long-term financial planning of large capital projects. And because I think the work will be done before our next meeting, I figured I'll just just really quickly, over the next few weeks, on Fridays, the CIPC group will be evaluating and prioritizing rather large projects that have been proposed by the town. What I'm out of the long list, the shorter list, to the very short list, one of the things that has been proposed from Parks and Rec is to create a childcare center. And not sure anything about the details other than that, but if that is of interest to you or other things that are on the potential list of things that the town of Hanover will do, just know that on like basically every Friday from now until the end of February, we'll be basically reviewing some of those longer term projects, so.
Thank you, Kim.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions on committees? Turn it over to Jay. Oh, Tony?
We had talked about creating a sports committee. Is that, I'm not sure if that's happening.
Good.
So we had an initial meeting with with town, Parks and Rec, and there we've thrown together a small working group that is, I believe Ryan is scheduling the next meeting. So representatives from the town, our athletic director, it's pretty small, maybe seven people. And then after we get together and look at what the, again, centered totally on middle school sports, we'll report back to the board.
Okay, so this is not a board committee at this point?
No, it's not, not at this point.
Okay. Jake?
Okay, speaking of committees, we are in the process of pulling together an ad hoc committee to review requests from the public about changing our school calendar to be more inclusive of religious holidays in particular, but also to more broadly look at our school calendar and see if there are things that we might do to make it more responsive to the desires of our community. One of the things that came up even in sort of the final drafting of the calendar we just presented in draft form is that there's been discussion about whether or not those two days that we go to school, Monday, Tuesday of Thanksgiving, we should be off to give people that full week off. And we brought that to the leader, our leadership team on yesterday, actually, and it was essentially voted down. We just, the more days that we take off, they have to be replaced by adding days somewhere else and that's always a tricky proposition. So so we'll have this committee and we'll entertain the suggestions that have been placed before us, make decisions and then bring that recommendation back. I think that that should be a time limited committee. I'd hope that maybe three meetings should be sufficient to do the work that we need to do. The other thing I asked Lisa to, again, this would be more of an SAU issue, but Dresden should know about it since we are SAU as well. In our budget process, when we were working on the SAU budget, we were talking about non-union compensation and that conversation seems to be the song that never ends. So I asked her to seek a couple of board members from each side of the river to sit with me and a few other folks to, again, in a very time limited way, tackle that task once and for all with, again, a deadline that would have recommendation for the whole board well in advance of our subsequent budget. And I know some people expressed interest who I'll probably be reaching out to, so. Of course.
Kelly?
So if there are members of the public who would like to be involved in either of those committees, I suspect the calendar or sports conversations might be more of interest to many members of the public. What's the best way for them to inform committee work? Is it an email? Is it to show up to a meeting or what's the?
For these ad hoc, these small ad hoc committees, we typically sought interest. The interest came to us for the calendar. So we have two members of the public who reached out to us based on their following of the discussion with the board. So we've invited those two members of the public to join, two teachers, one representative from each of the teachers' unions. We have a principal on the committee as well. I anticipate sitting on a, so again, keeping it small and lean. We have in the past put out big casting calls to solicit public input, as Mr. Odell can testify with our equity committee. It can be challenging sometimes when you have over 20 people on a committee. But we don't have a policy and indeed really don't even have a past practice that I'm aware of where we formally open up committees for the general public. Sometimes we put out a letter with regard, I think in the case of the equity committee, we did do an invitation that went out through a mass broadcast. And certainly if the committee, if we really needed broad public input, I think that will be the way to go. And as far as administrative compensation, I you are members of the public. I really don't, I've been elected to serve in this capacity. I really don't know. I know we have a lot of educators in this community and probably are experts on administrative compensation and, but I think in this case, I think we can handle it.
So an email is what I'm hearing would be.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Hey, Rick, it's Lisa. Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I actually just arrived in Hanover and should be in the building momentarily. But just wanted to echo that both of these committees will be time bound. We do not want them to be, you know, longer than they need to be to get a good recommendation to the board and that if members of the public are interested in serving on either, they should just shoot me an email. My email is on the SAU 70 website and we have had, as Jay said, people expressed interest in being on the calendar committee. We have not yet finalized that group, but we will very soon and there will be members of the public on that. So thank you and I'll see you momentarily, I hope.
Can't wait. Yes.
As far as like the school calendar one in particular, because that is very time bound, how how late can we or I mean, we usually kind of approve this next month kind of thing, like as far as in the normal course of business, is that the timing for this committee?
No, no, no. We're, we're.
Oh, this is not.
The draft you already have.
I missed this part.
Yeah, it's for '24, '25. It would be for the following year.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, Kim, we can't get it done between now and next month.
So I asked the question.
Linda Dante from Norwich, I just wanted to say, these will be open meetings, though, so people can attend and certainly be present, which again, is then it's at the discretion of the chair to decide how much participation. They should know that walking into the meeting, but people can always come to these meetings. So I think people need to know that.
And their their school board meetings still, so they have that 30-minute public comment requirement. Yeah, so just to clarify.
I just wanted to know, it's not happening somewhere in a room where nobody knows about it.
Lisa's your hand up still or is that an old hand?
No, sorry, I'll put it down. Thanks, guys. No, sorry, I'll put it down. Thanks, guys.
Anything else for Jay? Robin?
She submitted hers in writing.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments for Robin's report?
I didn't see it, sorry.
I can see Robin's been super busy lately. I think she has her own office at the Hough Library now for curriculum meetings.
Okay, moving on to Jamie. Jamie submitted a whole bunch of documents too that...
Sorry, go back to Robin.
Yes.
I think I heard that, well, we have the solar eclipse coming up, and I heard through the grapevine that maybe Robin has applied for some grants for everyone to get the solar eclipse glasses for all students. And I just wanted to, like, just kind of, I guess, follow up slash confirm the rumor mill, and if that is something that we can offer our students. I know we don't have school during that day. It's during our April break, but it's just kind of an exciting thing that we could get.
Robin's ready to talk.
I did ask for 500 glasses, so hopefully we'll get some of those.
For Dresden?
Yes. For all the schools.
Thank you.
Very quick question. Robin, I didn't see this in your report, but are you involved at all in the planning for the February math meeting at RMS?
I'm actually going to meet with Tim tomorrow about that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Robin? Okay, moving on to Jamie. Jamie submitted a whole bunch of reports. Jamie, did you have anything quick to tell us, or was this just...
Sure, it's always quick. Sorry, I can't be there tonight with you. I will follow up with folks tomorrow. But the MS 26, I just want to note and have it noted in the minutes that I brought it to the board. That's what we file with the Department of Revenue Administration once the budgets have been ratified, and it's gone through the warrant article vetting process by them. So that's the document that we will be posting, I think on February 8th, with all the other information, when we post Hanover as well. I do have the Hanover document ready as well, so I'll just let you, let you all know that. There's a financial projection posted for your review with all the backup documentation. I don't have the Hanover High School cafeteria, because we were still working through posting the revenues, but I'll bring that to you, I'll send it out as soon as it's done. Also, earlier tonight, I think Teresa, my finance director, brought over a rough draft of a budget mailer that we had spoken about condensing and making smaller. And so I'll welcome everybody's, I have posted the content down here in administrative for you to take a look at. Everybody can take a look at and critique it, tell me what you hate and what you like or don't like anything, or whatever you want to do. Okay, we still have some time. And so that will use five and a half pages. We did a quick mock-up, just so you could see what it'll look like when it gets mailed out. Because the six pages that I've attached in administrative content, you know, it doesn't show as like a mailer. It's just the pages that were set up in Publisher. So I'll be working on that, finalizing that hopefully by next Monday. So if you folks have input, please let me know by then, so we can get it over to the, to the folks who take it from there. The annual report, we're also still working on. That will be, no changes to the annual report. We'll still do it as we have in the past. So we're working on content for that and also on content for the Norwich annual report that the town of Norwich puts out. I think that's it.
So Jamie, I'm looking at the draft letter. If we have editorial stuff, I see a whole bunch of like typos and stuff.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you're hard copy with the pen and ink?
Sure, or I can, I can, if you're adept or have access to Publisher, I'm happy to share the Publisher files.
Yeah, if you can do that, that would be great. Anything else for Jamie tonight?
So I'll post the Publisher files. I don't know if board docs will let me or not. I'll try to post them here and see if you can pull them down. If not, email me and I'll send them to you.
Okay. I'm not aware of a need for a non-public.
Oh, wait, we can't. We have to at least wait for Lisa to get in here, or we can all hide.
Why is that?
Oh, she's, she's on her way in.
She's got the nerve.
She's got the nerve to get in.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
Okay, so we're now back into public comment. Ms. Ma, did you have something you would like to say? If you do, yeah, raise your hand. Can you move it over? Go ahead. Can you introduce yourself and what city or what town you're from?
Great, thank you so much. My name is Pepe Ba. I am a Hanover resident and parent of two children, one of whom attends the race school. A little bit about me, I am the former director of the Certificate in School Management and Leadership at Harvard Business School and an education practitioner with 15 years of school leadership experience, including coaching principals on the effective use of formative assessments and data to inform instruction. I would like to formally make a comment regarding the proposed changes to the RMS math curriculum and to share my opinion that the proposed changes should be delayed until a thought-out, comprehensive, and evidence-based plan is developed. I attended the meeting at RMS in person to hear from the administrators and teachers directly. I was really hoping to be presented with a really comprehensive, sort of built-out plan that had been developed over a number of years, engaging multiple stakeholders. And instead, I was very surprised at how few answers were provided to the audience in the room, particularly around some really important and basic questions, such as, you know, it's proposed the removing of placement exams and data. Without this placement exam or data, how will students initially be sorted into small groups without classes, within classes? I didn't hear an answer about how teachers will ensure that all kids are progressing forward. How will assessments work if students are moving at different levels? What systems will be in place to identify and support students who are struggling or not engaging with material? On the other end of the spectrum, what systems will be in place to identify and support students who are actually truly prepared for acceleration, accessing courses at the high school level, you know, upon demonstration of mastery? So I left that meeting in person with more questions than answers. I reviewed the RMS principles update. It looks like a meeting has been scheduled for sometime before February break, so I really appreciate that and look forward to hearing what that date is. I hope it's made public. I think there are about 60 other parents represented in the room, in live, in person at the last meeting. But I just want to state again that, you know, from my professional, personal opinion, I really hope that until RMS has a thorough and comprehensive plan for implementing any new changes to the math curriculum, you know, these really fundamental, basic questions, you know, I really ask them to consider delaying these changes until these questions can be answered. I believe that the school board deserves this. I believe that the parents of the Dresden School District deserve this, and most of all, I believe that all the students, current and future, who will be heavily impacted by these proposed math changes deserve it. So thank you again for your time. I really appreciate you taking the time to allow me to speak, and I look forward to the follow-up meeting in February.
Thank you. Yeah, there will be announcement, once the date and time and location is set, that will be, I believe, sent out. Tim, how are you intending to advertise it?
We'll try to advertise it the same way we did before, which is we'll send something out to the RMS parents. But we also have access to, through our messenger program, to MTS parents and race school parents. So hopefully we'll be able to access all the families that will be affected by what's going to happen.
But this will also potentially impact future Marion Cross students, so do we...
Right, yes. Oh, sorry. I meant to say Marion Cross. So we'll send it out to all the elementary and middle school.
Great, thank you. So at this point, if anyone has any items for the agenda for our February meetings, please get them to me probably by the 20th. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, February 27th, at 7 o'clock here. And at this point, if someone has got a motion to adjourn, Lisa, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, just in time. I move to adjourn this meeting as I arrive at, what time is it, 7:57?
Great, second. Kelly? Lisa?
Kristy, yes.
O'Veil, yes.
Hartman, yes. Barry, yes. Herman, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Nelson, yes?
Lozzer, yes.
McConnell, yes.
Costa, yes.
Ben?
Eni, yes.
Eni, yes.
Thank you, everyone.